Based on retaining or if they have to do projects, it's looking pretty good. Looking at six percent increase this year, level off the next few years or a four percent, maybe less, so no impact. I think this is a big one. I think refinance and debt will play this year to help in the impact. I'm pretty impressed with that.
I think the majority of the usage falls in the first two. Over seventy-five percent fall into those first two categories.
It does.
Even less than ninety-five percent.
Yeah.
It's an increase.
Before you move to capital improvement, Mr. Montori, two questions. The wall sewer agreement, is that something that have we hammered out rates with them for a period of time?
Yeah, we're just signing the twenty-five year rate.
So we have accomplished that. So now there's a little more predictability in terms of where that's going.
You know, it will be, one of the things that's going to help with sewer, again, another reason why I'm probably going to be shifting is we'll be signing another agreement for another town to use a connector sewer, called the holes. A lot of the agreements that have to grow the money to help with capital projects that otherwise would be rain impact projects. And obviously, beyond town, beyond town, we're going to flow.
The second question I have, I know in the past, and it hasn't been a problem or an issue from my business point, at least in the last few years, but are you satisfied, your finance director satisfied, you've scrubbed the allocations to the point where we're comfortable with all those? I know at one point, there was a lot of discussion, again, prior to your tenure, that the allocations were out of whack.
Yeah, I think we have. I have a careful background look at the history because we have a lot of budgets that presented. I still think we're probably somewhere lower or whatever the allocation was just came in. We took a big draw, but it's not increasing. We eliminated a lot of the patents that were getting allocations.
Yeah.
Reduced percentage. Instead of having a formula for health insurance, we had actuals.
Yeah.
Look better on the margins. I reduced the share. It's not reduced to any amount that I wanted to. It's going to be a two-year process, but immunosex retirement allocation, they give us a number for water and sewer, and we've added on an allocation on top of that for some of the salary that the charge to water and sewer. I've never been comfortable with that, so the next few years of phasing that out, whatever the allocations for water and sewer for all such time, we give the allocation for the enterprise fund in case of sewer reduction, the allocation of a hundred thousand dollars to our test for the year of sixty-six thousand. So those are the type of things we're looking at.
Yeah.
So I think they're good. I can stand up and justify all of them. I can do that kind of thing.
Sure. Great. Thank you.
So capital improvement plan. The presentation of the plan, the document itself, the forms that were filed by, presented by the patents, the same as they have in previous years. I have the plan right here that I'll scan tomorrow. Some edits I'm going to make on the document that I'm presenting tonight that will change tomorrow and get every other line from the residents to see. I'll send an updated document, presentation document of our plan tomorrow. So the five-year plan primarily is for DPW, for the general fund of water and sewer, as well as fire department. There's one item for facilities equipment upgrades for various town buildings that we have in every year. The bulk of it is for the DPW fire department. As you can see from this, FY sixteen, we'll be looking to fund the ambulance upgrade, pickup truck for the water department, and structural gear for the firefighters. A big thing in the fire department, it's a big element of this FY seventeen, two items that we're going to really take a hard look at, one is the center fire station, as well as the under ledger. Both of those are big tickers. If you look at the overall numbers that projected over the next five years, what are the funds for the fire department, nine point seven million dollars total, nine point two dollars for those two hours. Those are going to be tough to figure out. They just be tough to figure out. We'll tell you now that the center station will have to be funded through this project because we don't have a budget to handle that type of project.
Sure.
I'm not sure how we're going to address the budget.
So the next step needs to be done in...
We've been pushing that back for the last three years.
Yeah.
Because of community inspections. We need to put the budget on the air. The director chief, is there something creative that we could do to trust the board this year? We'll look at it.
It's the same, there's two big risks in one year, isn't it?
I know. On the DPW stormwater drainage category, we're looking to do some, a lot of the DPW funds are coming of a powerful chapter Maggie for water and sewer. I just mentioned either retained earnings or the lumped in borrowing. But there are no really any funds in the general fund budget to assist with projects in DPW. We'll be doing some transfers either in the fall, either at this town meeting or the fall, most likely for projects that the Americans are throwing. Stormwater drainage is a major issue in town. We have poor drainage, as many of you know. We're required to meet a new discharge permit through EPA DEP, and then we need to start getting ready for us to have some mapping and engineering, some improvements. And the four hundred thousand dollars that you're seeing there for drainage system compliance, we're not going to be able to fund at this town meeting, but it's something we're going to have capital flow probably in the fall, as the plan gets better idea of what we're showing teams. But as you can see, it's an annual cost, first two years being the highs and then dropping it off to an annual cost of two hundred thousand dollars. And that's just to meet the current requirements for our stormwater discharge.
And the chapter nine funds that were already spread out, are they being used in this fiscal year or...
Sixteen. Some will be used this year to start some stuff, but most of it's highlighted. And when you look at the actual plan backup that I'll give you tomorrow, you'll see what the directors identified to use in chapter nine. Transportation, this is mainly roads, all chapter nine funding. But the four point five million dollars over the next five years, we'll have a chapter nine of money to spot from the, probably use four point five in addition to that out of the general fund. Roads are in terrible condition. These winters are making it worse. So we'll do as much as we can with the chapter nine of money he has is going to target North Street next year as a road to finish. We had thought we were going to do East Street next year, but we're going to put that off to two thousand and seventeen. That notified the residents, these towns residents who can keep us in contact with. Believe it or not, the roads are pretty good shape, better than most roads in town. We're going to make sure it stays in good shape. But construction going on in the fellow woods, it doesn't make any sense to do that until it's all done. So the big road this year is North Street.
Do you know what the status of the Daskin Road and Shawshing Street intersection is?
That's moving along and there's a hundred and twenty thousand, there's money in here for that. So there's, that's been awarded in the works.
So that section of the East Street that comes over the rise and is near the gas station convenience store, I assume that won't wait till seventeen?
No.
That's wrong.
My remnants can't take much more.
No, but we're going to do some traffic saving with this.
Excellent. Thank you.
And then there's a hundred and forty thousand dollars in traffic sign improvement to meet federal guidelines. We need to do inventory and upgrade all our traffic signs. And that hundred and forty thousand dollars is not able to budget. The Springtown meeting, we're going to begin that, again, will follow. A lot of the funding that is outside of chapter nine is going to have to be to the fall. And there are category facilities miscellaneous for DPW. In the fall, we'll be seeking funds from CPA money to do all the fencing and backstops down Livingston Street. A hundred and sixty thousand dollars, the director and the staff have scouted some engineering work on this DPW facility. As you can see in FY seventeen, at the same time, we're looking for a new fire station and ladder truck, a million dollars, and we need to face for some, we're not sure if the million dollars are going to turn out the way they want. So that may be an option in that explosion. And then the one item that we are going to fund from the stabilization fund this year is the hundred and forty thousand dollars for tree and stucco removal in town. The director and the staff have done a survey of the entire community and have understanding what trees are hazardous and need to be taken down. The one forty is going to take a pretty good dent out of that, a survey. We still have about fifteen percent of the town left to do, so probably more funds needed in the future, but that's going to address hazardous trees that have been identified by the departments, residents call them. Fleet, all of the fleet's going to have to, for sixteen, we'd have to wait till the fall again. But as you can see, over the next five years, we're seeking eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars for equipment, fleet upgrades. All of that money can't be, can't come from chapter nine of money. We'll have to use the stabilization fund if I'm not funding this. So the grand total for the general fund over the next five years is twenty million and a hundred and two thousand dollars. Without chapter nine of money, without the stabilization fund, we'd be doing this. Next slide is our water and sewer enterprise fund items. As I mentioned, I don't keep one of those because I don't talk about it. It's the sewer, we're looking to do some work at the end of the pump station. Big cost going forward with the infiltration work. God, the apartments. Collection system upgrade, big item is two thousand and eighteen, a one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's to actually replace the force main, fix the force main up in the middle of the street to help provide sewage, better sewer flow to that area for paying out developments. Again, two point six million over the next five years to spend from retained earnings. The water, as I mentioned, the hydro program will be ongoing, engineering design of the Lubin Street water line replacement FY sixteen, work on the two-inch asbestos water mains as well as I see tampering with plant upgrades. With the exception of the water treatment plant, we will go forward with funding for the other items I have approved, reasonably, retained earnings, and the borrowing for the water treatment plant upgrade. All of the water and sewer work that was requested by the department will be fully sprinted down there. Then the last item that just gives you an idea of what the costs are for the equipment that will be shared by both water and sewer, and those items and those amounts will take in from the water treatment, water enterprise or sewer enterprise retained earnings. So for all projects for all years, we're looking at forty-one million, forty-seven thousand dollars. The next few slides will go into detail, just gives you an idea of how we plan to fund them. First slide is, these items need to be funded through the stabilization fund, reasonably appropriated through cash. Obviously, we don't have enough to do all of these projects, but the general fund, general fund items. I need to move the center station tomorrow.
Good.
As well as the power pump block splash.
Yeah.
But as you can see, we just don't have enough. If I want to use the whole stabilization fund, we're going to find, we're going to freshen it. Second, we're just going to find it. Chapter ninety, we're spending five point six million dollars over the next five years of chapter ninety money, which roughly means a million dollars a year of the cap. So we're spending every cent we have. Contained earnings, we'll pay for all the sewer items and water rounds I mentioned, twenty point eight million dollars in retained earnings, transfer from contained earnings. Again, I got to take the treatment plant out of that in the next five years and figure And then finally, this gives you an idea of the cost for each fund over the next five years. Last slide, twenty million dollars out of general fund, sewer waste price two point six, and water savings one point five, and then below gives you an idea of what we're going to do. Just going to adjust to take the treatment plants in the end, fire station, you know, there's a substantial amount of work to be done. And then just some comments on the capital plan. General fund projects, we're going to fund it, just like across what we need to do. We need to apply, the director of public projects and his engineering staff will come to people to select them. Probably after town meeting, we have enough on the plan right now. We'll be doing a presentation on the new pavement management software that they have up online, which identifies the streets in town that need to be done. You'd be surprised when you see the streets that need to be done and the costs that are associated with it, but you would think the worst streets in town will need to be done for us, but that's not the case. You want to do better streets for us, because you don't want to lose them. You know, the streets are just so far gone.
Great.
It's an interesting amount of development. Funding for the stormwater apartment compliance, we only need to be the stabilization fund, just not going to be able to handle it. Facilities, as I mentioned, the DPW as well as the fire station and the dead explosions. And we may want to seriously take a look at doing a dead explosion for pavement management , addition to our roads. Because that's going to be, just this amount of cost to do the roads over the next five to ten years, this amount of cost, this impact on the tax rate, but that's why we can see a result in these same roads. So it's something Brian and I have talked about, and they want to consider. Sidewalks, I mentioned sidewalks because it's part of the capital budget and has no funding in the next five years. We'll follow that, that type of issue. That's the capital plan that I was going to quickly, just going through it, I know I have some changes to make, I'll change some of the numbers, but those are the projects we are going forward. We'll do the details of the projects tomorrow. We'll talk more.
When you look at these projected projects, when, you know, you say he's going to work, look at North Street this coming year, and how much coordination has there been or is there in this plan so that if we have a water main or extensive sewer work to be done on North, that's done before?
We could what they've done.
We do the payment.
We did it on East Street.
I know.
North Street, we got a gas line in before we did that payment, so we were very consciously doing it down at thirty-eight and Cock Road.
Right.
So we absolutely could what they've done.
And as far as when we have a significant development, are we getting any mitigation when there's damage to a road?
We, I would tell you, our mitigation from developers is poor, as often as they have. The most I see from mitigation was out of hand over the project. I'm not sure, there's a fair amount of money in the city areas, I'm not sure why, there's probably a lot of areas, you should have done the handover pump station and force main. So our mitigation is poor, we can do, we don't, there are developments going on up down on thirty-eight, you know, we're not asking for anything.
I wonder if we have, I mean, is there a process to change that, to ask for more?
I would be, I would love to. We're going to get a lot of resistance and a lot of complaining.
But I wonder, I know we've talked in the past about if there's an economic development aspect to the project, that state funds might become available, in some cases not, certainly not in all.
Especially with housing, these aren't real job creating.
Right.
Projects for housing, everything going on in town is housing. So the, the state always likes to see a full component to it, so it's always a concern for people developing town. Our, the impact, mitigation and impact that we get from developments going in is, I know East Street's a good example, where we did the water, we did the water line. And a lot of towns where I had that developer do that.
Yeah, because I'm just thinking also of the project that we know of that are slated for up and down thirty-eight, you know, down towards Colonial, up here, across from Walmart. It's only going to make thirty-eight worse. And if we don't get some funds to handle that, then we're, you know, we're asking for even more resources from our representatives next time we see them.
Correct. So I can hear about it. Thirty-eight's falling apart. We'll be racing to see which road falls apart, that's what, in town. Just falling apart, we'll just have to try. I know the first teaser put down.
Your optimism is overwhelming to me.
I'm sorry. Well, you know, it's, we talk about the staff all the time, Karen, I tell you, you know, with Brian today, you know, he went over the plane and said, no, I'm not even being aggressive enough. I can't because there's no mind. But, you know, people call them what they're, they're roads, they're sidewalks, they're drainage. You know, this, when the snow melts, hopefully it's a slow melt, but drainage is non-existent in this town. You know, wherever it does drain to, it just causes a flood. I think Todd and David, you know, remember, you know, that a few years ago, where the road just fell apart, right? Bad storm, it fell apart. That guy, the state came towards the funding. But we could have, I would have done that right. That's, that's every day Crest Road, which we just replaced the water line. That road just completely fell apart on the water line. I'm going to pay that road, we'll fix the water, but that guy, we have money in water or enterprise fund. So it's, goes to the issue of, you know, making sure we have enough money in the bank to deal with emergencies, smart overall programs we take on, smart overall budget, plan for as we have in the last five years. And yeah, I'm not, I am pessimistic, sound pessimistic, because we just have so much to do, so much to do. That fire station needs to be done, needs to be done.
Yeah, the question is, are we going to, I mean, hopefully, we're going to be coordinated with the town center planning committee so that we're not just replacing the fire station right there and then coming back later and saying, no, we should have put a year, we should have done this for town size.
Yeah, we're going to talk to someone, but I just don't, yeah, I don't know where we can go with that, where we have any available, with this statement, you know. We talked about it today, a lot of issues on the statement available, this and that, but, you know, we don't even know Livingston yet, you know, so we can't, we're running out of time.
Right.
So DPW reserves are no different. So there are some big tickers going on. So two, that's not even mentioned, that's what I was just saying last night, this plan is the town plan.
Yeah, it does include the...
Schools have a whole other slew of issues that are as dramatic and as ied as it happened, I think we'd be more pessimistic.
The number's probably bigger. The number's bigger.
I don't envy the school for being superintendent and the business manager because the school buildings are in terrible shape, and I struggle with it every day. So add that to the list of dented schools, and so now you're up to, you're going to have a hundred million dollars to do some of that. I'll leave you on that though.
So not that I'm a glutton for punishment, but one thing that I do think would be a very positive exercise, I've sat through it in years past when I was a member of the finance committee. I'd love to have, when we get maybe past town meeting, have your DPW director come in, as you just stated, we need to potentially raise the bar of discussion in the community about roads, sidewalks.
That's what we're going to do.
But we need to put the gory details out there with respect to what it costs to maintain, what the immediate needs.
That's a great idea, we'll do that with the pavement manager presentation.
I would encourage you to do that.
I mean, that's a whole other discussion, the operator budget, he has nine guys and I, you know, for this entire town. So just maintain what we have.
Yeah.
So I think that would be a great discussion.
You need to spell that out, people need to digest it and think about it. I know you and your team wrestle with it every day, but most of us, myself included, get up and go to work, and we're not thinking about it. We expect it to be done, and it all comes with a price tag and consequences or priorities that we have to, at this table and your desk, we have to shift around.
Every town has, and Karen can speak to it too, is that we have, every town within their general fund budget has a certain amount of debt, you know, probably close to a million dollars in debt service each year for roads and stormwater. Because if that debt falls off, they get more debt, and it's constantly going, our debt service in general funds are out without us. It's just, right, and towns have just, I mean, towns are putting forward capital plans in the tens of millions of dollars now, like for roads and things like that. We didn't have chapter ninety, but I don't know what we're going to do.
So my other question is related to the mitigation issue that Bruce raised. I imagine there's some tone setting that comes from this board, but it really, the control over that issue, I think rests in other quarters.
Yeah, it's, it could come from us, it could come in DPW, whatever it is, it is what we were required, we were working with the planning board on it. It's something that would have to originate from what the DPW feels is needed from the impact of the project. We could put that forward, I could, I'm sure I'll get calls tomorrow, especially in the place.
Well, but in the context of due diligence, it's not, we should have that discussion, at least internally, and make some value judgments. So, you know, I would encourage you to think about getting the planning board and your DPW engineering team, whatever the case may be, together with us and yourself, and at least evaluate that and have some frank discussion.
Yeah, I mean, we, I mean, I know the development committee probably talk about the amount they pay for the formal housing fee that they pay in lieu of units, and, you know, and that's, that money was going towards the impact of the project and not, I think we do well with the formal housing community, it's just, you know, the amount of money that goes into the trust, but there'd be, some of that money to help with some of the impacts between.
Yeah. We should take that as homework and at least explore it and think about it. So it involves other people beyond this table, so you ought to bring those folks together. So it's always a sobering discussion when you do that.
I know, I don't mean to be like, but it's just the reality, I can't.
All costs money.
We're not the only town dealing with these issues.
No, no, and I will say that for the money we have available for projects, equipment and operations, the department has done a terrific job. They, we've done well over the last five years in building back budgets and getting them the needed equipment to maintain services, we just have so much more. We can, I guess the attitude needs to be, we can be better. I think we're doing well, I think, yeah, other towns struggle with it too. I guess we're doing as well as other communities, and in most cases, better, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't be striving for better. That should be the attitude, we can do better.
Valid point. Okay, so we will mull this stuff over, particularly the budgets and the...
I'll take the presentation, I saw all the steps I made.
And we'll pose our questions to you, and at our next meeting, we'll take some action. And I ask my colleagues to be prepared to do that on the twenty-fourth. I also want to thank Karen for joining us tonight. I know we were here a few nights ago with the finance committee and the school committee, and you were here for that, so I want to appreciate your times, evening hours spent here and...
It's much appreciated, I mean, it's good support.
So that's something that we do appreciate, so thank you. Okay. All right, so the last item we have on the agenda is board member reports.
Well, Mr. Panellitis, we addressed that.
We do. So we, we are now at nine twenty-nine. I thought we'd be done a little earlier than this, but I guessed wrong as usual. So I'm going to try to set the tone and be very brief. The Economic Development Process Review Committee meets on Monday night next week. Thank you. Do you have any comments?
Nothing from the CPC, I just have one fundraising effort coming up on the eighteenth. There's something called An Evening with the Angels at the Country Club. It's benefiting the graduating class there all night long celebration, which they do right after graduation. And the, you know, the description is everyone speak with someone who has passed on, come meet Laura Lee, Claire Boyne, and Spear communicator, all proceeds will benefit TMHS Classic two fifteen, two thousand and fifteen all-night long celebration. Tickets are twenty-five dollars each, checks payable to TMHS back. This is always a sellout. Doors open at seven, it's at the Country Club, March eighteenth at seven P M. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Panellitis, what do you have to add?
The town center committee will be meeting next Monday over at the high school. We will be reviewing the five proposals that were received for the RFP for the town center, so we'll start looking at that. so we'll start looking at that and establishing a process of how we'll review them and how we may come to a decision as to which one to bring forward. Economic development has not met recently, I suspect we'll have scheduling a meeting shortly, and that's enough for me tonight.
So I bring this to the stage.
There you go. The public events and celebration committee meets a week from tonight, and obviously it's open for the public, it's at Tuxbury Police Training Station. Just want to quickly mention that the 20th Annual Legislative Breakfast was held at the Holiday in Tuxbury, and our chairman, Mr. Todd Johnson, made opening remarks to welcome everybody. We had two speakers that spoke from our delegation, Representative Selly and Senator Vivaldi Italian, it was a very informative breakfast, and I thought it went very well, and I was proud that it was in Tuxbury.
That's it. Thank you. All right, so we gather here again on the 24th of March 2015. Similar to tonight's meeting, we will start the evening with an executive session, anticipated to discuss collective bargaining matters. So those who are interested, certainly we will try to enter into our open session at roughly 7 PM, but we appreciate the flexibility if we're off by a few minutes. And did the warrants close, Mr. Martin?
Warrants closed on Friday, both special annual town meeting and recording warrant together, I'll get it tracked out as soon as I can.
Okay, so we'll expect some further information relative to the upcoming town meeting, and election is also on the horizon. So I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn until we meet next on March 24.
Submove?
Second. All those in favor please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? We are unanimous in adjournment. Thank you and good night.